On the EDA parcel. You know, we were proceeding in good faith and conversations with the EDA and with senior staff on how to proceed with this project. And so, you know, to be at a point now where we're a year and a half into a review process, we're three reviews, three staff reviews into the process. And if you go through the city staff comments, you will find zero comments that question the inclusion of the city EDA parcel. That issue was not raised until Mr. Shields reached out to us after the third submission, after we had received the written city staff comments to say, oh yeah, we've now decided that we don't think the city EDA parcel should be included in this project. That's a really tough pill to swallow when we're a year and a half into a review process and having good faith discussions with the EDA, getting a consent from them to file on the application. You know, the direction at that point was, okay, well, now submit it in LOI. Submit an LOI within a couple of days of that request to the EDA, expecting that we would have a conversation and talk about, you know, the project with the new EDA director. Well, not the, I guess, the new chair of the EDA because he's conflicted out, but the vice chair. Instead of that, it was simply put on the agenda, went into closed session with no discussion, no comment to us. And we got a, you know, a phone call afterwards from city staff saying, yeah, sorry, can't tell you why or what the conversation was, but, you know, the EDA decided that they weren't interested in your LOI. And we've subsequently tried to set up a meeting with the LOI. We've reached out to individual EDA members and, you know, the city has not helped us set up a meeting with the EDA or facilitated that. We've made that request numerous times with no result. And the same thing, trying to meet with individual EDA members. So I apologize for the, kind of the length of the background on this, but I want you to get a full picture of kind of the frustration that I think we're feeling as someone who's trying to come in, who owns property, who is a taxpayer in the City of Falls Church, who has spent millions of dollars advancing an application and wants to invest, you know, nine figures in the City of Falls Church and provide a lot of improvements to an existing condition that's not great. To sort of be treated this way is, I think, really unfortunate. And in my experience of almost 20 years practicing land use is unheard of. I've never had a project treated like this. And so I just want to make sure that that is on the record because I think that's, it's a really unfortunate way to do business. And it really makes it so, I think, you know, people looking to invest in the city are going to think twice about, is this where I want to go if I'm going to have the rug pulled out from under me a year into a zoning application? I think all of that said, we still want to do a project in the City of Falls Church. We like the city. We like the property. We think it's a great site for development. And, you know, we want to figure out a path to actually move this forward with the city as a partner, with the EDA as a partner, and come up with a project that makes sense, that works for this site. And so I appreciate the time tonight and for letting me give you a little bit of the background, but I'd rather talk about, I think, the project and why we think it's a great opportunity for the city. So you can sort of see on the, you know, the screen right now. You know, it's, the project itself, I guess, you know, the staff went through the details on it in terms of kind of the overall use mix. But I think from our perspective, you know, this is a project that really hits the bullseye for what the small area plan is looking for. It's a project that has really high quality architecture, really high quality site design, and provides, again, a significant number of benefits to the city as it moves forward. So we could flip to the next slide. So I think one of the things that, you know, has been brought up is the impact on the Burke and Herbert site and what's left over, you know, with that project. And I think from our perspective, you know, we tried to be pretty thoughtful about shaping that parcel and the residue there to make sure, A, Burke and Herbert can continue to operate, because that's their desire, is to continue operating on that site, but also set it up so that you had a development parcel that fit in with exactly what the city wants to see on Broad Street, whether that's office or hotel. It's a 22,000 square foot parcel. It's a perfect square. It's got direct access off of Maple. You know, as we looked at, you know, the, I guess, the parameters of, you know, that site, we actually looked at CoStar because we were sort of surprised at the pushback that that was not a viable, you know, office development site. And when we looked at CoStar for sites of that parameter and commercial development on a lot size and the height we're talking about, we found that, you know, within the United States, there are 56,158 office buildings that meet those parameters. Within the district Maryland and Virginia, there's 1,818 that fit those parameters. To say that this is not a viable, you know, development site, I think, just doesn't match the reality of existing office development, you know, in the region and nationally. The other thing I wanted to point out, we talk about consolidation. On the screen, you've got the concept plan from the small area plan. You'll notice there's two buildings there. The small area plan did not envision a single consolidation on our property and the Burke and Herbert site. It envisioned two buildings. It's exactly what we're proposing here. You know, they're coordinated. Yep, I agree. You know, that's, that's sort of what's envisioned is everything's coordinated and that's exactly how we're trying to move this site forward. We can flip to the next slide. And this is just, you know, similar to the office, you know, potential for a hotel on that, on that parcel. Again, you know, we've designed that with the idea that this is a, this is a real development potential and a real development concept that could go on this parcel. You know, the idea that we're sort of orphaning the Burke and Herbert site again, I think, is just not, not really tethered to the reality of, you know, a site of that size. So we flip to the next slide. We talked a little bit about the site connectivity, and I just want to reiterate, you know, we really view this site as a connector piece between the downtown core and Broad Street and really creating a gateway at the northern portion of Maple Avenue that helps bring people down and bring pedestrians down to the development that already exists further down on South Maple and on South Washington. You know, it's a site that's really situated well to serve that function with that great accessibility to downtown, but also to Big Chimney Park, to a lot of other developments that are happening around us. You know, it's a site in a, in a project that's of a scale and type that fits in exactly with not only what's envisioned under the small area plan, but frankly, what's, what's been developed around us already. And so I think for us, you know, again, we think this is a project that's wholly in conformance with the comprehensive plan. We can flip to the next slide. From a commercial standpoint, again, I think a little bit surprised to hear the comments on the SE criteria because the most, you know, we basically spent the last year maximizing the amount of commercial, you know, on the property on the ground floor. And the latest round of written comments that we got and then the follow-up with the review staff, I guess it's in the packet, so you can look at the comments yourself, but you'll be searching for a while to find a comment about the amount of commercial not being in conformance with the special exception criteria because it's not in there. Because the, the, I guess, the feedback that we received when we had our written meeting with the staff after their review of the written materials and the submission of the written comments was that it was not, that was an issue that had been resolved. And I think part of that is, when you look at the percentage of retail that we have in this project, it's a higher percentage than, I won't call it founders too, I'll call it Madera Falls Church. It's, you know, it's a higher percentage of commercial than what the city council approved in another project within the city. And frankly, this is a much worse commercial site than a project that's right at the intersection of Broad and West Street. And so I think from our perspective, I'm not sure what else we would be looking for if we're already exceeding the commercial percentages that the city has approved in another project. I think that said, we think the commercial that we've put in here is really going to be fantastic in creating an active streetscape. You've got commercial that lines almost the entire frontage of this project, all the way up and down Maple, wrapping around Annandale and almost all the way down on Annandale. The only areas that aren't covered by commercial on the ground floor are where we've got entrances to the residential lobby and the loading area. And I know there was a conversation about kind of the amount of commercial on the ground floor. I think it ignores a couple of things. One is there's a depth limit to the amount of a commercial bay. You're not going to have an 80-foot deep commercial bay if you think you're going to be able to actually lease that space. That's, again, you know, we got to have some reality in this. But I think the other piece of it is, all that commercial on the, the parking on the first floor is dedicated to the commercial. It's almost like saying that if you had a surface parking lot, that the, you know, the surface parking wouldn't count towards, or be a part and parcel of the commercial use. You know, almost that entire ground floor is commercial, whether that's the actual commercial use or the parking that's there. So I think we definitely take issue with that. And from the, you know, I guess, the quantity, you've got a site that has zero commercial right now. You know, the amount of commercial that we're adding, I was not a math major because I went to law school, so it's not my forte, but I believe that, you know, any increase from zero is an, you know, an infinite increase in the amount of commercial there. I say that sort of flippantly, but, you know, we've tried to really maximize the amount of commercial for a site that frankly is not a great ground floor retail site because it's not on Broad, it's not on Washington. But we think we've got a program and an approach that we can really make, make work on this site. So we can flip to the next one. From a streetscape perspective, you know, I think this is, you know, one of the areas where this site really shines and this project really shines. And frankly, part of that is the rationale for when the city staff asked us to explore including the EDA parcel. It's because you get a unified streetscape all the way up to Broad. You get those improvements that really are going to draw people down from Broad Street down into Maple. And, you know, part of what we've done is not only, you know, meeting the streetscape standards that the city has, but also adding outdoor park space with an urban plaza, seating areas up and down that frontage. But, you know, wide sidewalks, we've got 10-foot clear sidewalks along Maple, and then we've got clear sidewalks on Annandale as well, even though it's not covered by the streetscape standards. We try, we've tried to adhere to those streetscape standards as much as we can on that frontage as well. I think what you also heard is that, you know, we do have sort of tree canopy that we're hitting, open space that we're hitting, you know, for this site. But I think the combination of the better improved pedestrian environment and the commercial really is going to create a really vibrant pedestrian environment and something that, again, we think is wholly in line with the comprehensive plan and the small area plan. Flip to the next one, please. Just, I guess, quickly on, you know, the landscaping, I won't get too much into that, but, you know, really focused in the landscaping on making sure we're using native and adaptable species, creating a biophilic experience for pedestrians and residents in the project. You know, outside of the street level open space, we also have three courtyards that are proposed as part of the project. The south courtyard, which has a pool oriented to really capture as, you know, as much of the sun as we can. East courtyard, which includes gathering spaces, fire pits, grills, really gathering. And frankly, because of some of the grade change, that courtyard really is connected to Maple Avenue. And then the north courtyard and the area along the west of the property are intended to be green roofs and really help with just the environmental sustainability of the project. Again, something that I think we're, we're very interested in and that really aligns with the city's goals and policies. We can flip to the next one. Actually, you can flip past that one. From an architectural standpoint, you know, we view this, again, as a vital infill component of Falls Church, really creating a building and a design that complements the streetscape and the pedestrian environment in a way that is going to bring people, you know, into and through the site. We flip to the next slide. The building itself, it's a seven-story building. I think what you see is a lot of really good fenestration and articulation in the building so that it is broken up significantly. It's not a, not an imposing building. I think the courtyards certainly help with that, the materials, but just the architectural detail of the project. Additionally, we've really focused on the ground floor transparency because almost the entirety of the frontage is for commercial uses, you get a significant amount of transparency into the ground floor of the building. The, I guess, the other things to, you know, I guess, consider in the VCs, I think we've made all of the expected commitments on architectural design, whether that's, again, the ground floor transparency or things like including ventilation shafts for restaurants, treatment of exterior vents, all the things that the city wants to see with its projects. Let me flip to the next slide. Just to give you kind of a view from the corner of Maple and Annandale, you know, we view this as one of the prime corners of the building, and I'll show you the other one, but really trying to focus on the architectural design at that corner. And you can start to see the ground floor, the commercial uses that wrap around both sides. But, you know, again, we really think that, you know, creating great architecture at a prominent corner like this with outdoor seating and accommodating the roundabout, again, you're going to have a project that is really accretive to the city. Flip to the next slide. I'll go through the elevations quickly, but the south elevation, which has, you know, most of the vehicular access, but you can also see that most of that frontage is, again, commercial, except for the loading and garage entrance. And then we've got a secondary residential entrance, but otherwise it's 100% commercial on that front. Flip to the next slide. The frontage on Maple is 100% commercial. That entire ground floor space is all dedicated to commercial with multiple bays, multiple access points that, again, we think is going to create great transparency, but also really strong vibrancy along that frontage. Flip to the next slide. The north side, that's where the main pedestrian, not pedestrian, but residential access to the building is. It's a little bit tucked away, but again, I think we're trying to focus on the prominence of the commercial piece, you know, for that, that side of the building. And then we can flip to the next one. And this is the western side, this is the portion of the building, it's not really visible from the street, but knowing that, you know, we have neighbors at West Broad and we're interested in foresighted architecture and making sure the building looks good from every view. You know, also focused on the architectural detail on this side of the building. We flip to the next slide. And I guess just while we're talking about sort of the relationship with the West Broad project, there were some comments that were brought up about our relationship with, with that project. And I think as we looked at it, you know, in most cases, we exceed the setback from that property line that the West Broad has, where it's adjacent to us. And so I think it's, you know, for us, I think we're not only meeting all the building codes, but essentially mirroring and in a lot of ways enhancing the setbacks that were provided at the West Broad. We can flip to the next slide. And this just gives you kind of a view, both in sort of profile and the site view of the relationship between those two and the setbacks. I guess one distinction is that, you know, we added a green roof, you know, on our side of the building to, again, enhance some of the view there, not only for our residents, but also for the folks in the West Broad. Flip to the next slide. From a transportation standpoint, it's a project that I think hits all of the city's multimodal goals and really prioritizes the pedestrian environment, the pedestrian experience. We've moved all the vehicular traffic and loading onto Annandale so that along Maple on our frontage, it's an unbroken pedestrian experience. We've also incorporated the proposed traffic circle, including pedestrian crosswalks on Maple and Annandale, and really have a robust multimodal program through the TDM program we've proposed, through public bike parking, also really focused on the private bike parking. You know, that was not an afterthought for us. You can sort of see it on the plan that's on there, but our secured bike parking is a direct shot into the parking garage at grade from Maple so that you're really prioritizing folks who own bikes, who live in the building, who want to use them. You're making it as easy as possible for them to own a bike and to use it. In addition, I think we responded to the comments that we heard from the city council, from the planning commission the last time on the frontages and incorporating bike lanes along Maple. You know, we followed the city's plan for what that, that street section is going to look like with the roundabout, but we also pulled the share row back a little bit further so that, you know, one of the comments was allowing people to have a pull-off so if they don't feel comfortable riding through the traffic circle, there's a way for them to exit. And we pulled that share row back so that you can come in through the existing access point to Burke and Herbert, access the sidewalk and avoid having to ride through that, that traffic circle if you're not comfortable with that. And then on Annandale, you know, we've added a bike lane there, but also we've maintained the on-street parking, which we envision as short-term parking for pickups and drop-offs on both of those frontages. Flip to the next slide. And I will say, I noticed that somehow this slide did not get updated from the earlier presentation, but, so I guess ignore what's, what's on the screen. We've committed to lead gold for this project. In addition, for EV charging, we've committed that 5% of all the spaces will have EV charging stations and will have the infrastructure for 50% of the remaining parking. We have a voluntary concession that the building is going to be solar-ready. We have a voluntary concession for electric-only appliances. And then on the sewer capacity, I think, you know, we've worked with the city and coordinating with the folks on the Quinn's project in terms of the forest main that's being installed. And, you know, our project has some flexibility in terms of whether the sewer flow is going to go to that forest main or if there's capacity for Fairfax that we've got the ability to gravity flow there as well. And then we can flip to the next slide. On affordable housing, again, I think we're achieving the city's goals for affordable housing. We've committed to 10% affordable housing for this project. We've also partnered, and that's for the life, lifetime of the project, but we've also committed to partnering with a group called CRI, which provides housing and support services for individuals with mental or intellectual disabilities, that there's a potential that up to 10 of those units could be provided for folks who are clients of CRI. It would not be a group housing, it would just be units that would be essentially set aside for folks who participate in that program. And knowing the challenges of people in that community, you know, we've agreed with some of the discussions with CRI that those units would be made affordable to those at 40% of area median income. And then on the fiscals, I know that there was not, I guess, an updated fiscal analysis on the city's side, but, you know, we've updated our fiscals based on the anticipated commercial program and multifamily program. And I think we're right in line with every other project that's been approved in the city in terms of the fiscal impact that we're providing, and a lot of cases, I think, are performing better than that. So we flip to the last slide. But I guess in conclusion, and I apologize that we went on a little bit long, but again, it's been a while since we've been able to come back and give you an update. We think this is a great project for the city. We think it hits not only the small area plan, the comprehensive plan goals, but just the overall goals of the city in terms of creating great mixed-use pedestrian-oriented development. I think it's unfortunate that we're sort of in the position we are related to the EDA parcel. I think we would still love to actually have that conversation with the EDA. I'd love, we'd love to get direction from the city council on, on your views on incorporating that, that property into the, the project. But, you know, outside of that, again, we think this is a great project for the city. So I appreciate the time.
Great. Thank you. So appreciate the perspective on kind of what's happened to date. I think some of the history you shared is certainly not my expectation of how we do business in the city. Moving forward, I think our interests are very much aligned. You want a good project, we want a good viable project in the city, so we're glad to move forward and talk about what the feedback is. I did actually go back and watch the meeting from March 2024, and I know that we gave you some pretty pointed feedback, so it looks like you did make some improvements based on those, so we look forward to discussing that with you as well. Wyatt.
Mayor, if I could just have a moment, because the presentation did begin with, you know, a fairly lengthy discussion of the background. I would simply say, this staff report, I think, reflects the facts of this case. I think these, the points we have been making about the primary criteria, the threshold issues have been consistently made with this, with this team from the very first conversations that we've had. So I think the characterizations, while impassioned, I don't think they're fair. I don't think they're accurate. I don't think they represent the way that we try to interact with people who are trying to invest in the city. One thing that I think maybe does put a point on things is while the staff has been consistent about some concerns about conformance with SE criteria, the point about having the, this project extend onto the EDA land and, and kind of beyond the property boundaries is a natural extension of those comments. By making the project bigger and sort of more expansive, that failure to meet the SE criteria is not just contained to this parcel, it actually becomes a bigger issue in terms of trying to meet city policy and city goals, you know, in the district writ large. So, you know, and specifically with the frontage at Maple and Broad Street, which we think is a very important commercial parcel for the city for the future. And so I think it is reasonable for the city to be concerned about its future development and its future viability to grow the city's commercial tax base and meet other policy goals. That point, I think, has become in closer focus in the last two months, and I think that has caused some consternation. And I, I own that, I understand that, but I do want the council to have that additional context.
Thank you, Wyatt. With that, I'll open up for questions and comments. Dave?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So I've reviewed the staff report very closely, and I find it well reasoned and entirely consistent with, with our ordinances. I think important questions are raised about, the fact of the matter is that this is just a huge apartment project with very little commercial, and the long-term cost to the city would be significant in terms of the student production and the costs of that. And I think the other comments made in the staff report are right on with regard to the failure to meet the primary criteria. And here you have a giant apartment building being put on a commercial being put on a commercial, on a zone commercial area, with virtually very little commercial provided. So I think both the context and the special exception criteria are clear in my view that this project doesn't make it. And finally, just a comment about the the implied threat about talking negatively about the city and its its development practices. All I would say is that's not at all persuasive. So I think the city staff has laid out lots of questions, and I'm frankly not interested in seeing this project again until those questions are successfully answered. Thank you.
Others? Aaron?
I guess I can go. Unfortunately, my reaction is not going to be much more positive than Mr. Snyder's. I know that you took issue with whatever internal conversations were happening, but I think it was pretty clear during the first submission that at least a number of us were concerned that this did not meet the primary or secondary criteria for a special exception application. You know, I think the first time it came through, it had the additional difficulty of having a commercial use that wasn't even a permitted use on the first floor at that time. And so you had an additional hurdle. But to me, the concerns about, you know, it's a it's zoned commercial, you can get a special exception for mixed use, but it's not just supposed to be a residential apartment project. It's supposed to be a mixed-use project. And we've had a lot of residential development go up. I think, you know, if you look back at the Founder's Row, the Madera Falls Church, council conversations, it wasn't on council at the time, but I remember that is it wasn't a unanimous vote on council, because there were council members who didn't feel like that project had the really necessary amount of commercial space in order to justify a special exception at that time. And I think here, you know, we've had a lot of residential development, and you're coming on the heels of those development projects. And so I think in terms of what you're bringing to the city, I expect to see a much more persuasive sort of commercial application that isn't just simply commercial as an afterthought. Here's what our building looks like. Here's the great architecture of the building, like actually, you know, like some of the design elements of the building. But to me, there's like, right now, no persuasive commercial component at all to this building. And I have concerns about the retail plan for the other development, you know, down the block. I remember telling you I had concerns about the lack of any sewer capacity at this project and it being reliant on the other project. And so there are a number of concerns in my mind that still aren't met. The commercial component percentages have gotten worse with this submission. And I think the sort of blinders that the team has had in terms of just wanting to go back, here's our next submission, here's our next submission, without dealing with threshold issues, to me, does not like, you know, benefit you as the development team to say, oh, we're here on submission number three, because I look at it and I say, well, what happened? Because they're still not addressing concerns for from submission number one, never mind the sort of threshold, other threshold issue of needing to kind of have an application that has the component pieces of it, you know, together as the applicant's, you know, burden coming forward with that. So, you know, that's not to say that I don't think anything should happen on the property. I just think that, you know, it it may need more of a going back to the drawing board, and it may be going back to the drawing board without reliance on that tail piece if you don't have a, you know, purchase agreement for that tail piece. And so then I want to see what this looks like, you know, as a project that has its own, you know, public space and urban space and those sorts of elements to it that isn't reliant on sort of like the piece that isn't part of your property.
If I could just respond quickly. So I, and I appreciate the the comments, and I think we certainly heard the the viewpoint, you know, from the the last meeting and, you know, understand where you're you're coming from. I guess I would just say, just from a factual standpoint, so the commercials actually increased fairly, from a percentage standpoint, fairly significantly from the the first submission to this submission. You know, I think we we felt like we had a creative idea for a use that frankly, we thought was needed in the city in terms of a daycare and a co-working space. And I think we we heard loud and clear that wasn't something that the city was interested in in modifying their their zoning ordinance for. And so, you know, pivoted away from that. But I think, you know, we we've tried to be responsive to all of the the comments that that we've received, and frankly, trying to maximize the amount of commercial on the the project in terms of the the ground floor space. And I I guess I wouldn't categorize it as an afterthought. I think, you know, we feel like the commercials are really critical part of the project in creating that really activated ground floor space and and great pedestrian environment. And so it's something that I think we're, we've been very focused on that aspect of the the project. But again, I appreciate the sort of comments and perspective.
And I don't, you know, I don't have to get into back and forth. I'm not going to take other people's time getting into a back and forth with it. But, you know, when I think about the commercial, I think about, okay, what, you know, what is the actual, like, use? What is a new use? What is a creative use in the space? And then when I also look at the fiscals, the fiscals are largely driven by real estate tax revenue and a miscellaneous category. And when you look at, you know, meals tax, sales tax, B-pole, you know, those numbers are relatively small overall in terms of the fiscal impact. And so to me, like, that doesn't speak to a, you know, relatively balanced, like, mixed-use project.
Just one comment on when when we drug, when you're looking at a 13,000 square foot area, which is the main kind of slug of on Maple, we're four years out from delivering a project if it were, you know, if we were on the right track today. The, no retailer's going to commit to that. We own retail elsewhere in the city. Like, you're talking, you need, they want to see the space built, they won't commit to it, especially when you're talking about subdividing it up to multiple users. And just the economic environment for bigger users, it's just not there today. So getting a pre-commitment to where we can come in here and promise you something that likely won't be there when we actually deliver the project, I I think we can program it out. We can show you all the different people we think would take it today. But I I don't think that's reality of what will end up happening.
Okay, other comments? Laura?
Thank you for your presentation. Obviously, I was not here in March of, on the council in March of 2024. I just had a question, and I don't know if this was the staff projection, but the the projection of 18 pupils, 18 students, that seems low to me. There's 64 two-bedroom units. So 18 school-aged kids seems low to me. Is it, was that a staff projection?
Those are from the the staff. Not from us.
Okay, so I might want to also go back and look at that, because again, that that seems low to me. And, you know, that is something that we need to keep our eye on. We have the enrollment projection for this coming years is we want to see if that really plays out as far as the what the demographer, the number that they gave us. And so I'd like to see how that number plays out. But I think that's something that also we need to really keep our eye on. So thank you.
Just to respond to that, Gary Ford. The student figures, we actually take the unit types by bedroom and apply that to your address list in schools. So those are actual related numbers. We just got the new information, and we're looking at that and the modeling right now. So it will have the 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 most current updated. So but but it's very, it's very detailed information, so it's it has a high accuracy. So, thank you.
Other comments? Mary Beth?
Thanks for your presentation. I guess I've I've been through a lot of special exception approvals. I've never heard one like this before. So that sets me on my heels a little bit. And I think there's, in in the time of those three submissions, clearly things have changed. I have a question about the EDA property. Can you do this project? Can you alter this project without the EDA property? Do you have to have the EDA property? Are you using the EDA property as the green space in the project? And would that mean you have to shrink your footprint a bit?
Yeah, so the the answer is to go back and and take the EDA property out now would require a full redesign of the the building. You know, we've been proceeding, you know, I guess with the consent of the EDA to to come forward. And so we would end up having, it would shrink the footprint, so you would lose both commercial and the residential.
It's the triangle, right?
Correct. Yes, you lose the triangle. But it it would require us to to shrink the the building down and redesign.
Does that, that would change those percentages a bit? If you're able to maintain the commercial, but you're reducing the footprint, that changes your percentages?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, I don't know that we know what the, you know, the the final outcome of that design would look like, because, I mean, we we had a concept from, you know, two year, year and a half ago at this point. But, you know, that that concept was not really advanced, you know, beyond just a high-level concept. I think just, and just to be clear, I mean, I think we've also been a little bit curious about sort of the the rationale for, I guess, pulling the the EDA parcel out. I think we we feel like it adds a lot from just a design perspective. I think that's one of the things that frankly, we've been a little bit interested in is kind of where that that change of heart has has come from, because we we do think it it adds to the project. I think, you know, we've also proposed, if there's a reluctance to include the entire portion in the project, you know, do we try to to figure out a a path where it's the southern, the portion south of the the Burke and Herbert site? I think we had also proposed, you know, if there was a concern about incorporating that northern portion of the the EDA parcel into Burke and Herbert, we'll just subdivide it and convey that property to them now, so that they've got a a unified parcel all the way out to to Maple. You know, I think we've we've tried to be creative in, you know, responding to the the comment about the the EDA parcel, but it's been a little bit, I think, frustrating just not not really knowing the the rationale.
Okay.
I mean, some of the rationales, a lot of it is just thinking about how that EDA parcel helps this site, and and it's not clear how it does. It certainly harms other parcels, and it gives this site sort of lots of tactical control over that other parcel. And so it just seems like that's not advisable. So I I think those are some issues that we've been grappling with in terms of thinking that sale through. Now...
And it's such a small percentage of the whole property.
Right. And so, you know, on its, on the merits of the project, if it were to proceed, you know, maybe there could be some different configuration of the EDA property. But that's, you know, if the other threshold issues sort of get over the bar for the for the project as currently conceived to proceed.
Okay. I I would agree with Mr. Adams' characterization that it is a highly underutilized property right now. And you're right, there's no tax revenue coming in now. So the question would be, how do we, how do we maximize that? And then the, I know the clear direction you got from us two years ago was just to get that Burke and Herbert property in there. You said you've attempted, and that is not a possibility. And you've made the assertion that the property that exists with Burke and Herbert is something that could be redeveloped. Has staff looked at that at all? The size of that existing Burke and Herbert property?
I mean, it's hard. We're, smaller makes it harder.
Right.
But I guess I would just say, objectively, when we looked at CoStar, which is probably the best resource, I mean, there are thousands of commercial office properties that...
That was all buildings. Those hotels.
Sorry, go ahead.
That was office, hotel, and apartments, those numbers he gave earlier. So, but it's very doable. It impacts economics, but that's a decision Burke and Herbert's making today. And they have real estate departments and all the money in the world, and and can make that choice.
It's also worth just pointing out that, you know, the smaller site makes it challenging. And we're talking about an EDA parcel that is 4,000 or so feet in total, inclusive of the widest and deepest and biggest part of it that sits down adjacent to our site. So the the portion that is adjacent to Burke and Herbert's remnant parcel here is is maybe 1,000 feet of land.
Okay. The CRI voluntary concession, does that count towards the 10% affordable housing, or is that in addition to?
It's set up so that it's it's an option where 10 of those units within the the 10% could be set aside for CRI folks at the the 40% AMI level.
And the way in which that's been discussed with CRI is that they would sign a master lease with lots of long-term options. I mean, we would commit to the permanence of it in our VCs, but they would, that way, if it's not working for them, they can get out. But their master lease would be at the 40% AMI, and then they can choose whether it's their customers or staff members who also can't afford to live in infill locations where they need to maybe go over to a group home, because they do have group homes. But these will not be group homes. These are individual units that are are affordable units that individuals will live in.
Would they be supported at all by staff? That's...
It'll depend. There's a range of services there, and their, CRI's main goal is to help procure housing for that community. It's it's really difficult to challenge the the programs that are, to access the programs that are out there. Not everyone that has intellectual or developmental disabilities can do so. And so the level of service that each individual receives might differ from from person to person. But a lot of it is just helping them get established in housing that is hard for them to access today.
Okay. And then my last question, I'm just going to charter or channel our former mayor, Tarter. What's the exterior building? Is it cementitious siding or brick? The right answer would be brick.
I don't know. Well, I don't have the percentage. I don't know if you guys have the, come on up. You got to come up to talk to the...
Yeah, my name is Manoj Delaiya. KGD Architecture. There's, there's a mixture of brick, as you can see from here, the corner, the bottom is charcoal-colored brick, as is the corner. And then the main facades are all brick. Inside of the courtyard, there is some cementitious panels that are used paneling on the inside of the courtyards.
The wood tones.
Wood tones that you're saying.
So my last, my last question is just, is there a way to do this project without the EDA parcel and to increase the commercial footprint? And that's, that's kind of where, that's like...
Yeah. I mean, I think that it's, a lot of the EDA parcel now is just a function of the fact that we're going to have to go back and redesign the building, and and frankly, have like lost a year of, you know, time and and costs that has been put into the the project, you know, in time, in trying to to redesign that. I mean, I think there are also negatives in terms of you're going to lose units, you're going to lose commercial space by shrinking down that that footprint. I don't know what the exact numbers are, but you're going to have losses in in both of those categories. And, yeah, and that's, yeah, the other aspect is you won't have the the streetscape going up to to Broad Street. I think for us, it's just, it it's such an underutilized parcel right now that it, sort of logically, it, I guess, we're we're sort of trying to figure out why you would not want to take a underutilized parcel where the city can get, you know, the fair market value for the the land cost, but also get improvements that are accretive to, you know, the the entire city from a pedestrian connectivity standpoint.
And Burke and Herbert has no intention of developing anytime, and probably in our lifetime. And so you would get the streetscapes now rather than sometime in who knows when.
Okay. Thanks for answering my questions.
Back to Laura?
Yeah, just a couple of things.
Uh yeah, just a couple of things. I was looking um through some of the correspondence we received. Um Rushmark, who owns West Broad or developed West Broad, um had talked about that the uh development would negatively negatively impact 24 residents at West Broad. And they brought up the fact that when they were building um Winter Hill, a resident complained, and they made um some significant changes so that they wouldn't be encroaching so much on Winter Hill. And, you know, would like to see the same in in this instance. Um and then we also received an email from a resident who um advocates for uh bike safety. And um, you know, we just adopted a we're done just recently adopted a a master bike plan, and we're really trying to promote bikeability in the city. And um that group was upset to see that, I I believe, a a bike lane on site South Maple was being pulled off.
Yeah.
Um so that's something else I think that we would need to look at.
Sure. So maybe just to address that quickly. So I think with West Broad, um I always take it with a grain of salt with when another commercial owner is complaining about development um coming in next to them because it has the the ring of um being worried about economic competition rather than necessarily planning issues. I I think there's a difference between the relationship between a multifamily, well, in their case, you know, a 90-foot multifamily multifamily building and townhouses versus multifamily to multifamily. I think the condition that you know, we're developing um is a condition that you see pretty much everywhere that that development occurs where you've got multifamily buildings next to one another. Um I think if they were really concerned that, you know, future development next door to them was going to impact, they're a sophisticated developer, they probably would have pulled their their units back further from that that property line if they really felt like that was a a future concern. And then on the the bike uh plan, so I guess I I would just say, I I think we are fully supportive of the the city's efforts on bike, uh you know, bike ridership and and uh facilitating that. I think, you know, as part of the project and frankly, the the part that we control, you know, we have not only the public bike storage, we've got the private bike storage that's readily accessible. We've got the bike lane on Annandale, and I think on Maple. Um we simply dropped in the plans that the city had for the roundabout. Um i- if the desire is to change those plans to have a a bike lane, we're all for that. But I think we're just, we're trying to follow the the plans that the city gave gave us for the the roundabout so that we're being consistent with what's what's being developed there.
Got it. Thank you. Debbie.
Yeah, so many of my comments and questions have been asked in part, so bear with me as I parse through some of my questions. And although I didn't reflect rewatch the meeting from 2024 in thinking about what my, you know, impressions at that time were and reflecting on changes that were made, um and some that I don't necessarily think were made maybe enough. But I I'm thinking about the, so I was definitely one who was pushing hard on incorporating Burke and Herbert. I, you know, would have loved to see, as we all would have loved to see, that whole entire block consolidated. We originally had like talks about a mural or something on that side. So as you're going up and down Broad Street, if Burke and Herbert's still there, you know, it's a low building you're looking over, what do you see? What's the character of the street change to look like? And now it's got windows, right? Um so let's say we you know, we build this project, you've got windows on that side, you have however many units facing that direction towards Burke and Herbert. Then we redevelop Burke and Herbert. You know, it's 22,000 square, whatever, square feet. Um and it's got windows. Are you setting those back enough for like you just mentioned?
Yeah.
In that West Broad should have set theirs back enough.
Yes.
contemplating that there'd be another building next to it.
Yeah, so we that actually is the the design of the building is is 100% designed to incorporate the Burke and Herbert development, actually coming up flush with that side of the building. You're you're right that we had a mural initially in the plans. I think, you know, the feedback that I guess we heard was not a lot of enthusiasm for a mural in that location. And so the the redesign and adding those windows, those are what are called at-risk windows, meaning that they're they're designed that when when and if the Burke and Herbert site develops, um those windows get closed off, and it becomes a a common wall and a fire-rated wall between the the two buildings. So they're they're flush to one another. It's just it's it trying to create an interim condition so that you actually have the windows and I think the better aesthetics on Broad.
And at one point in time, that between the, again, between Burke and Herbert on that side of the building, there was green space and contemplating some kind of connection so that you could figure out how you'd be moving around the building and how you'd be visually seeing it as a pedestrian biker or as a resident coming up to the building. And if you want, go back to that elevation, just look like a green green striping, yeah, back to the.
Yeah, and in in the interim condition, we we do still have um that that buffer and and planting area between the Burke and Herbert site and and what we're proposing.
So that's that green is not um accessible, walkable space, that's planting.
That is a 10-foot green on Burke and Herbert's side of the property line that would be retained per current uh code.
So that green's Burke and Herbert?
Yeah, correct.
And so but that green's not counting, you're not, I am just looking at the green.
Yeah, it's it's off-site, so that's not, we're not counting that as part of ours, but it.
But green roof is what's counted as part of your canopy. Because there's nothing within the property that you can see from that drawing.
Yeah, I think we we are counting the the trees that are or the canopy that's elevated, um you know, from street level does does count towards the the tree canopy.
Uh and okay, so if you were building by right, you're building a all commercial use 75 feet, you're not asking for a special exception, the setback from Broad and Wash or West Broad, excuse me, um that's where your setback is now as well?
No, we so if we were if we were doing it by right, um we wouldn't have to meet the streetscape standards, so we would.
Not, I mean, between West Broad with the setback, I'm thinking about the two buildings that are.
Oh, between the.
Yeah.
Are you, I'm sorry, yours, sorry.
Um between West Broad and this building and.
The Rushmark building.
Oh, uh, no, I think we would build the probably the same.
Okay. Um so.
Yeah, or frankly, like even closer. But um, you know, we just have to be meet building code setbacks.
Uh and you'd mentioned that this retail percentage had increased, and also that I've seen different numbers on the retail percentage, like um one of the public comments was retail percentage per unit comparing project to project over project. Um and this show, you said it was more than Madera Madera Falls Church, which this shows is 27,000 square feet of commercial versus 1193 on this uh proposed project. So.
Well, 1193 was the original. We're at um 14, sorry, 14470. And and in terms of the percentages, so we're at 6.82% of uh commercial percentage, the the Maderas, I believe, 6.7 something percent.
Yeah, these numbers are, I'm I don't I don't know the prominence of all these charts, they're just not jiving. So I, you know, I'd look to our staff to see what was actually built, what was actually filled, retail versus um residential, either units or square footage. Because that's still confusing to me. Um apologies, as I look through my notes. I guess that's it. Letty, you can go, and I can read through my notes. And you know, you haven't asked your questions yet, or Justine hasn't.
Um actually, following up on Debbie's question about commercial to um residential ratio, um this question might be for staff. Uh do we have stats from other buildings as to what the, like, let's say, the Quinn Project, or I don't know, Broad and Washington, or some of those other projects? What that percentage, understanding that each project is completely different?
Oh, we do. We have, uh, one of our attachments is a VC comparison chart, which I think we'll still have all of the information you're looking for as far as square footage is.
Um and is there something that staff is looking for, like a percentage from this building specifically? Or like a range? Or nothing specific? So we have.
In in terms of, you know, the SE criteria, you know, we're looking for you know, a significant ratio, and we've had ranges, you know, up to the mid 25%. Now, Founders uh two was um, you know, comparable at 6%, um and that was with enhanced um voluntary concessions um with a modification in the SE code that happened a couple of years ago that allowed for a a lower consideration based on increased um voluntary concessions for community benefits. And so um Founders um two came in, it was the first under that, and this is a similar project mirroring that.
Okay.
So.
So basically.
So so the lower commercial, you know, we're we're not gonna compare to, you know, 301 next door. That's probably uh around 18%. And so this project and the last project does not compare, but the code does allow for that consideration.
So yeah, so like, at least with the Founders Row two, Madera Founders Row, uh while they had a little bit lower commercial, they offer had other proffers that sort of, I guess, changed the package overall.
That's that's correct, yeah.
Um I was also curious uh to follow up on on Debbie's question and about tree canopy. So just to clarify, because in the in the staff report here, it says uh uh there's 13% tree canopy coverage throughout the site. Uh but it wasn't clear if that calculation included uh s- uh the streetscape trees. Uh so it sounded like that 13% does include the streetscape trees?
It it does include the streetscape trees, um which I think is fairly consistent with other projects that have have gone in. But I will say that um in terms of the percentage that we are covering, sorry, I'm trying to find the uh that that number. Um for the the tree canopy, um 73% of that tree canopy is outside of the right-of-way. So it's the the great majority of it is onsite, not not in the right-of-way.
Got it. Okay. Um and so actually, uh so when you say right-of-way, uh does that include the EDA parcel? Is the EDA parcel right-of-way? Or like what, I I'm not sure what how the EDA parcel fits into right-of-way?
The uh, that's a good question. The EDA parcel, whether that, it it's not, well, no. So the EDA parcel is not technically right-of-way. Um because it's not for for roadway purposes.
Got it. Okay, so when you say 73%.
Sally, you may have, I I I probably just stepped on your a question that was more for you than for me.
Uh but I I guess what I was trying to figure out is when you say 73% is not right-of-way, um so that 73% of tree canopy coverage includes the um EDA parcel?
It it does, yes. So the tree canopy does include the EDA parcel. And and I guess just the from a practical standpoint, it's it's the street trees that are the the right-of-way tree canopy.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, while while that um is triangular shaped, um it is in effect a a right-of-way configuration in terms of that. It it's very narrow and it's adjacent to the street, so.
Mm-hmm, okay.
It is a configuration of that.
Just to be clear, I mean, right-of-way is a legal term. It's it's a it's a parcel. Um it's it's not right-of-way.
Okay. I guess what I was what I was mostly trying to figure out is um like the the trees along the sidewalk, if those were included. And so I mean, I'll take a look closer, look at this, but it sounds like so that 13% does include the trees along the sidewalk. Um but if I'm looking at this again more closely, uh when you said 73%, um it's on the prop, on the the parcel of land plus uh the EDA property.
Right.
Okay. Um let me see. Uh for the commercial space, um I know that, so there was a a daycare proposal. Um right now, what I was having trouble figuring out is the commercial space sort of, uh it it's not in in some drawings, it looked like it was sectioned off. Is there a certain set number of commercial spaces for that?
Yeah, we we were trying to show just different options. So it could be one one single user, or it could be split into to different bays.
Got it, okay. And that determination up would come.
Yeah, that's it's gonna be sort of the the market determinations as we we get closer to the the leasing.
Got it. Um let me see. Uh so in terms of uh the the conversation came up about losing lost the EDA parcel, you'd lose uh footprint. Um also, the conversation about um the Rushmark building next door. If this building were to, like could you go higher and have a more uh narrow footprint and perhaps provide? Uh I was looking through comments that I had provided last time. I I personally really wanted uh walking space between the the two buildings. And um, you know, you do have a nice green strip there, but it's on the on the second floor. Um and so is there a possibility to go higher rather than?
Yeah, so the issue there is it's it would change the construction type.
Hmm.
Um so right now, we've got um the five levels of wood frame over two levels of podium, which is the the maximum height that you can go on under that building type. So it would push us into to concrete, which just is not economically feasible. Like you, you'd have to go up to, I don't know, 15 stories to probably make that that work, um even if you could make it work. And and just to, I I guess, a- address kind of the the connection that I know you had been looking at. I we did look at that. Um it just, it the issue was it it created issues with the internal circulation for the parking, um just from a site design standpoint. And also because we don't control the Burke and Herbert site, it we wouldn't be able to actually punch it all the way out to Broad Street. Um I think also just well, I won't say selfishly, because I think it actually has a broader benefit. We wanted to keep people on the sidewalk, so they're walking past our retail.
Got it.
I believe there was also a safety concern in that 301 West Broad, that wall there's, I don't know how tall, 20, 30 feet tall. And ours would be similar because of the the concrete construction. So you'd be walking down an alley with walls. So Mano, you had said there's a there's actually an architectural, like, reason why they don't do that? The alleys.
Somewhat of a happy that you were saying.
So ju- it just um, like, so it's on the the microphone, so that was our our architect just talking about the there there are architectural sort of theories or standards in terms of like how how wide you want a space compared to what's on the the two sides of it and how high those those buildings are.
Yeah, okay.
A little bit of a cattle chute when you go down a little narrow canyon like that from a safety standpoint, you can sort of one way in and one way out. Um to your point, if you went higher, you would shrink that footprint, that becomes less of a problem.
Um and then I did want to follow up on what Laura had mentioned regarding um the comment we got uh with bike lanes on Maple and continuing those a little bit longer rather than the share row. I I know you added in uh parking there. And so um trying to configure the space to to uh include the bike lane for as long as possible. Um I guess the other thing would be on Annandale, um also ha- having a protected bike lane, or even I noticed that there's parking, if the bike lane could be closer to the the they do this in DC a lot, bike lane closer to the sidewalk and then cars on the outside. Um or anything to to narrow the width of the the road.
Yeah, we're we're absolutely open to to looking at that.
Oh, one more thing, um and then I know it's getting late. Uh I noticed, so if the daycare use isn't in there, I did notice that in the VCs, it still says, um there's an exception of.
There was one stray reference to the daycare that we need to delete.
Okay, yeah, great.
Can I just, for the record, make a comment so that it's not lost, you know, in terms of this? So you, we've been talking about the first special exception of getting the mixed use, but there's also the second criteria for the special exception of the height bonus, that it has to be an exemplary project, not, you know, simply sort of where it falls among the spectrum of the other projects. And so I just want to be on the records that it's not lost, that I would still like to understand how, for the second criteria, this is also exemplary um in terms of why it would justify the additional height bonus. So thank you.
I mean, not tonight, but just so we don't lose.
Understood, thank you.
Debbie DeJevan.
Debbie DeJavie.
No, I haven't come, no, not yet.
Okay, so I think everyone's gone, okay, so, my comments. So, clearly, like, a vacant asphalt parking lot is not good land use, and so, we know that something is going to be better than that. Like I said, I did go back and read my comments and watch the March 24 video, where I think we did have a number of concerns, many of which I think still continue today. I think we talked about, actually, like, the childcare use that you had, I think I expressed that during the meeting, that I think childcare is something that we don't have enough of in the city in general, it's like housing, if you increase supply, hopefully prices come down. So, I personally would have liked to see that, I would have also looked to staff to update our B2 with zoning tax amendment to allow it as allowable use, because I still have not heard a compelling reason why it's allowed in B1 but not B2. So, I would like to put a pin in that for the future, even if this project doesn't have it. I did not think it actually met our bar for affordable housing, environment, tree canopy, or open space. Those are my comments from March 24. I see some incremental improvements in those. But my threshold issue back in March a year ago was still the concern over orphaning the Burke and Herbert site. I think I've been pretty consistent in my comments on that. I know we can debate whether the site itself is big enough for future redevelopment of some kind, but I remain concerned that we are creating another beetos on Broad Street, and that's probably not a great use long-term. Putting that aside, on the ground-floor uses, whether it's childcare or something else, as I've expressed with Founders, no, sorry, Modera Falls Church, for commercial uses, I'm more of a quality-over-quantity person, so for me, it's not a X percent we need to hit the threshold. I think in the case of, sorry, Modera Falls Church, it was a relatively low percentage, but we did hit a high point in that we got 12 percent of the units as affordable housing forever, and so that was compelling enough use, especially compared to the dilapidated carpet store in the Rite Aid that was there. I don't see a particularly compelling use right now for your 14,000 of commercial square footage. I don't think commercial is going to do particularly well on Maple and Annandale, frankly, without the Broad Street frontage. And so, I know you won't commit to anything beyond 2,000 square feet of restaurant space at this point, but I would like to see something more interesting and compelling if that is what you're going to rest your laurels on with that low number. It could be something complimentary to the entertainment use across the street at the bowling alley. I guess I look to you all as the industry experts of what that might be, but as it stands, I think between, again, my threshold issue of the Burke and Herbert site on Broad Street, the ifiness of the commercial uses, I do have some concerns about the project. I guess I would go to kind of Mary Beth's question, is if you don't hear kind of majority support for the project as it stands, given that, again, our interests are aligned, we would like to see some project here, given, again, that an asphalt parking lot's not great use. I guess I would look to the team to figure out whether you would come back with kind of redesigned, smaller project that could be more compelling, that probably is a smaller footprint. If the trade-off is, you know, keeping the same density, would you go higher to make it possible and make it pencil out? I guess I would ask you all whether you would consider that, so that this can have a life. I didn't hear, I mean, we heard some squishy comments, I didn't hear strong majority support for this as it stood, but I'd look to my council colleagues if people would like to see it proceed as it stands. Don't all speak at once. Justine?
I think that there's room for improvement, but I generally would like to see something happen here. So, that's a little squishy, but...
I'll, I'll, second, that'll be squishy. Room for improvement, some good movement from the first submission, but, I mean, you heard what we'd like to see.
I heard, Dave?
Yeah, let me just reiterate, unless the issues raised in the staff report are successfully and effectively addressed, I'm not interested in supporting this project.
Others?
I'll second and third the squishy comments. I, you know, I agree with Mr. Schneider that the staff, you know, and I like to try to support staff when we can, and, you know, that they have concerns, I do think those need to be further addressed. But again, I agree, this, it's a vacant, ugly parking lot, it's not serving any, any community use right now, so, you know, maybe it's just working out some of, there seems to be quite a few still comments, or in questions and things from, from city council and staff, and so, you know, if we could maybe get some clarification and maybe a little bit more, you know, updates and things that answer our concerns, maybe we could revisit it again.
Any final comments?
Could I just ask a question, just for us, so we've got the right direction moving forward? You know, I think we've obviously heard the comments on the, the commercial, you know, piece of it, and, you know, that aspect. On the city EDA parcel, is the direction from the city council not to take that out of the project, or should we be including that in the project?
It sounds like the staff recommendation was that that further risks orphaning the Burke and Herbert property, is that correct?
Even for the portion that's adjacent to our property and sort of comes down? Or the entirety of it?
They have to start over from scratch on the footprint, like, a little small portion of it would be possible, is that...
I would say there's two issues. One is the, the purchase of a portion of Burke and Herbert, that's kind of its own issue, and then having that sort of skinny land go from public ownership, the EDA, whose one job is to promote development and commercial development in the city, so that's a friendly owner to Burke and Herbert. But to turn that into someone else's property, you've turned a corner lot into something that's not a corner lot anymore. And, so that's pretty harmful to Burke and Herbert. So, having that tail go up is, you know, to, I think the staff recommendation would be that the EDA not proceed with that. Now, there still could, you know, having the streetscape improvement is a valuable thing, and if there could still be some discussions about that without ownership, that could be a good valuable conversation to have. But just having...
Can I just ask a clarification on...
A public can't go through private property to access Burke and Herbert, even with an easement, this just seems like difficult.
But I think we, and maybe just to put a finer point on the question, because maybe it wasn't clear, for the portion where, I guess, to the, the north of our site, for lack of a better term, essentially where the, you know, the access to the Burke and Herbert comes in, if we were to work with the EDA and purchase that property, and the southern portion, you know, essentially draw a line across, goes to us, the northern portion goes to Burke and Herbert, doesn't that solve the issue?
That, I think, on its face sort of helps with land consolidation, and so that's, I think that's a direction that could be positive, yeah. I think the EDA, I mean, we'd have to talk with, it's the EDA's property, but I, you know, I think the EDA's, would want to use its land to help grow the commercial tax base. I think that's what it, what its motivation would be.
We'd love to get a meeting with them. Sorry, you know, we've been trying to have a meeting with, you know, with the EDA or EDA members for a while, as you know.
I think there's the other issue, though, just of how big the site is without a compelling commercial use, and I think that's kind of, that's the other threshold issue that, you know, ultimately, you've asked to come to the coun, we've given you guidance on it, that's, that, and you've come to the council to ask kind of what the council's opinion is on that, and, and it's...
You've heard pretty consistent comments about commercial on the ground floor.
Yeah, understood, and appreciate...
Quantity or quality, right?
Yep, appreciate the feedback.
Okay. Any final thoughts? Okay. Thank you for coming back and for the discussion.
Thank you.
It's word at 11, can we take a bio break?
Yeah, that'd be good.
That's the only way I'm staying.
Okay, I think we're in the home stretch. Two more items.
We have two more items and the first is a spring budget amendment and traditionally we've come forward in the last month of the year to appropriate funds from grants or from other departmental moving money between departments. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Bawa for a review of what is requested with this budget amendment.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Hardy and members of the council. So in this budget amendment, we are... I just need to read a disclosure here. The city council is discussing the FY 25 budget amendment for the city of Falls Church. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, which may be affected by the proposed fiscal policies. As a result, I am in a group of three or more people who may realize a reasonably foreseeable direct or indirect benefit from the proposed ordinance. After consideration, I am electing to participate in this transaction because I'm confident in my ability to participate fairly objectively and in the public interest. Okay, good evening. So this budget amendment requests appropriation in many funds, general funds, school funds, CIP, Stormwater. So I'll go one by one and I'll focus more on the new appropriations and I will mention the others rather quickly. So in general fund, we are requesting new appropriation of 226,000, 176, a grant, state litter grant for 3,533 and then 14,000, which is bike share voluntary concessions. The bigger chunk of that is 159,000 and that is appropriation of additional revenues from Wreckin Parks activities, hobby fees and camps. And that is to cover the additional costs. They're expected... The revenues are expected to be over budget by at least 200, around 245 to 250,000, that range. The rest of it is 50,000 in permit revenues to use for an assessment for permit process. And that would include various elements of the permit process like cities' building plan review, site review, public works reviews of services and plan intake, all the way from inspection and occupancy. And that makes up the 226,000. Between department, transfers, net impact is zero. However, there are some larger numbers, so I thought I will cover this quickly. There is 150,000 CPeds is expected to go over budget by that for a position, a third transportation planner and also move of environmental planner from a city manager's office to CPeds. So that money needs to move there. Public Works, this came to council, the library HVAC rooftop unit, 117,000 when they needed to award the contract, so we're making that request for the funding now as we had mentioned in that staff report. Legal, outside legal costs are estimated to be at 425,000 versus a budget of 125,000. So they are expecting that their need for outside council expertise on specific matters is going to be 300,000 for this fiscal year. The sheriff's office, the jail costs are expected to be over budget by 100,000. There are some savings there and they need a net 60,000, net of those salary savings. The treasurer's office compensation is expected to be over budget by 38,000. Or a house, again, 20,000 because they have extra overtime cost for temporary relief counselors. And then Wreckin Parks, the community center bleachers and courtons, 84,700. And the timing of it is perfect while the HVAC system is being replaced, so there is a need for one-time money for that. And then finally, a deductible of 5,000 for insurance reimbursement of 621,000 for the traffic signal at Broad Street and Washington Street for the repairs. And this is going to be set up in the CIP. So all that together adds up to 774,700. And that is going to come up... We are asking to make that whole by using savings from other departments. And that includes fire contract, fire services contract. This year, we did not pay for a couple of the elements of that contract and we have savings there. And then salary savings from the city manager's office and also the police department. That would make up, all of those elements would make up the 774,700. The second piece we'd cover is the school operating funds. So in the school operating funds, they are requesting an appropriation of 1,317,982. And that's made up with a million 50,000 in user fund balance and 267,962 with state grant funds. And in summary, what they're using these funds for are 850,000 for the fencing for the baseball field. And then 298,000, that's the state grant for standards of quality positions, a bonus for them. And then the school board members have, while they heard that item, they also ask to give similar bonus to non SOQ positions and come up with an equal match of 268,000 using the fund balance. So that, that's the other one. And then the other big item is 500,000 for the concession stand, which previously had appropriation of 600,000 from the general government. And let's see. Okay, so moving to the community services fund, the school community services fund. So they are using, requesting 328,500 for projects, which include daycare, two projects and then community use for gym lights at the Mary Lynn Henderson Middle School, 103,088 playground, pathway, Mount Daniel, 100,000. Those are the two bigger ones. And then 70,000 for scoreboard, Meridian Stadium Field. And then 168,000 for backpack food program. And then 365,000 from this fund to transfer to their operating fund. And that would be part of the 850,000 for the fence for the baseball field. Then the high changes or appropriations request in the food services fund is 200,000 for the baseball field. Again, from this fund balance to operating and that makes up the whole 850. And then 168,000 to the community services fund and that was for the backpack food program. Then moving along to the CIP, in the CIP, we are requesting... Well, those requests on the school side, those are going to move to the CIP. And then again, as I mentioned, 865,000 for the baseball field fence and 500,000 for the stadium field, house refurbishment, the concession stand. And for the general government side, we are requesting a transfer of 450,000 from the Parklets project to the EDA to cover a portion of the 925,000 that was used towards Virginia Village Complex for maintaining the affordable housing in the city for that. So a portion of that to return back. And the second portion is a request of 695,000 in transportation fund. And that one is for the appropriation of the insurance reimbursement, that money that we're getting along with the 5,000 in the deductible. So all that together, requesting a new appropriation in CIP. And see, did I miss something? Okay. And then Stormwater CIP, so that's the other piece. Requesting a new appropriation of 790,000 and all that is coming requesting from the fund balance, the Stormwater Fund. One of them, the first item is for the purchase of non-point source nutrient credits. 640,000 funded by a grant partially, 50%, 320,000 and then a 50% match, which is coming from the fund balance for this program. And this is a portion of the total funding of 2.2 million and the remainder is in the fiscal year 26 to 31 CIP. And similar grant applications would be submitted annually in the coming years. In line item two for the CIP, Stormwater is a request of 150,000 for additional costs. Construction costs coming in higher than expected and this brings the total project budget to 830,000. And of which 400,000 is coming from an EPA grant in the past. And a match requirement for that grant is 25%, 100,000. So of the total 500,000, 100,000 is the grant match. And the remaining are requested from the fund balance. So that is all the items that we are requesting in this budget amendment. They're listed more methodically in the fiscal impact, like when where the, where the fund balances are going to end up. If you have any specific questions anywhere, I'm happy to address those.
I thought we were going to be done with budget.
I know. I didn't expect to come within seven days with more details.
Debbie?
I'll try to be linear, but I don't promise anything with this thought. So with all these, you know, I've been through this process, I guess, fifth time now, but all of these amendments should be reflected in what we just decided for the next year, right? So we know we're on this track of spending X, Y, and Z. Like we take this data, you have this information when putting together the budget for fiscal year 26 to incorporate this to the extent possible so that we don't have the same challenges the next year, right? Does that question make sense? Like how, to what extent can we incorporate the data that we're discussing tonight? And did we incorporate that into the budget for next year?
So I'll start with saying that these are pretty much all one-time requests, most of the CIPs. And we rely on one-time money for that. We did consider some of these when we are doing the fiscal year 26 budget. But these are funds we want to commit before the end of the fiscal year, so use of fiscal year 25, current year fiscal money is more appropriate. And that's why we're making this request. We're not going to wait till July 1st to make these expenditures.
Okay. And then for the non-point source nutrient credits, so the federal EPA said, here's what our Chesapeake Bay loads can be. They determine all the quantities of nitrogen phosphorus, the targets we had to hit and the cost for providing those if we didn't reduce our loads by that amount. Then the state gives us a grant for half that amount. So the Fed sets the limit, then the state grants us half of it and then local pays for the balance, the match of that. That's how this process works, right?
I don't know if that's the way the process always works. That's what the team's worked out in this particular case.
Okay. It's just, it's just one of those things that's hard to explain. Okay, well, the federal government sets it at this and then the state credits you half of it and then there's the local component. And what could we possibly do other than buying credits to reduce our load by this much? We couldn't really. There are not mechanical things that we can do to change it to that degree versus spending 2.2 million dollars on full compliance for fiscal year 26 through 31.
Correct.
Okay. Just two general points of interest. And then back to the several of the schools things. The city, the general government's paid 600,000 for our, we put in 50/50 for the fieldhouse, right? Do we already encumber that? Is that, I've lost track of, that's 600K.
That was in last year's budget, I want to say?
So...
In fiscal year 25 budget.
Fiscal year 25, general government gave 600K.
Out of the interest income, so we treated that as one time.
For the fieldhouse.
Right.
And now the schools are in fiscal year 26 going to...
Well, even this year.
Amendment fiscal year 25 spent 500K.
Correct.
100K less than the original budget amount. Okay.
To clarify, is it a million dollar concession stand?
1.1.
1.1. 600 plus 500. Got it. Okay. So paying just over 50% from the general government funds. And so I listened to the school board meeting the Tuesday after, you know, we voted on the budget Monday night and then listened to the school board budget on Tuesday and it was great news that the state had funding for a bonus for SOQ staff, so standard of quality staff, which are teachers, counselors. And the ratio that the state sets as standard of quality. And they gave 280-some thousand dollars for bonuses from the state coffers. Awesome. That's great. And then the school board voted to match that for all non SOQ. So all admin, central office, above whatever SOQ ratios. So that everybody, I assume so that every, you know, teacher who teaches could get it because we have a higher, well, lower ratio of student to teacher. So I guess I think, you know, where I think that's great, I think it's really hard. I felt it was really hard, having spent the last four years on trying to have parity between general governments and school staff in terms of the approach we have to compensation to find out after we'd already agreed on the budget that there would be bonus paid from, and it's the school board's funding. But I was disappointed to learn about it after the fact so that we didn't have an opportunity to think about general government staff. If we were to make the similar decision to have a thousand dollar bonus for every general government staff member, what would that dollar amount be roughly? How many staff? About 250,000K.
We have about 270 positions and about 30 vacant. So yeah, your number is quite right. And I don't know how the permanent part-timers are going to factor in. In the past, we have done like a smaller amount for them. Yeah, like prorated or something.
So I don't really know what to do with this information other than say, you know, that was the approach, I think, many of us wanted to take with general government parity on compensation. You know, I don't know if we look at where our funds are in the first quarter or we make some decisions about how we spend our... Because this came from operating year-end fund balances. So I don't know. We have additional surplus with interest income at the end of, what's our next report? Sorry. Is September?
Yeah, the year-end would be in September. However, I think we're planning to look at at least one more month of data in the June Budget and Finance Committee.
I just want to put out there that I think it's something that we should think about in terms of continuing to look at parity. I don't have any magic revenue sources. I don't think the state is giving any, you know, equivalent 280-some thousand dollars to general government staff for bonuses this, this year. But I think it's something that we need to keep in mind when we're looking at compensating all of our staff across the government.
So the schools are planning on implementing this by June 30th?
Right. It wouldn't be in the same, it can't be in the same fiscal year. We don't have 270,000 to do that with. Those are all the questions I have at the moment. Thanks.
Others? Erin?
I had two quick ones. One actually is, is, I don't know, the Aurora House relief people money that's in here, it just made me think about, I think that there are vacancies for the residential counselors and maybe they were thinking about not reposting until fiscal year, the beginning of fiscal year 26, but I don't know now that we have an adopted budget. Would it be, would we be able to post for the residential counselor sooner? And so maybe they can get moving on trying to get the permanent staff in there sooner rather than later. Because in the last meeting, I think everyone's understanding seemed to be that they would have to wait until the beginning of the fiscal year. And so if that could get communicated, that would be great.
Yeah, I think HR is aware that once the budget is adopted, they can accelerate the recruitment process. But I will do, I will remind Sharon.
Okay, thank you. And then the Wreckin Parks budget, I guess, where we are right now, I just wanted to confirm my understanding that the Wreckin Parks underspending was staying within Wreckin Parks going forward because I know there were concerns about our removing the capital reserves. And so interest in, in terms of the advisory committee of being a...
And so interest in, in terms of the advisory committee of, um, being able to potentially use that if they were, come up with reprogramming on Crossman as we had talked about and as some advisory committee members, um, had expressed interest in it their last meeting, so.
Correct. Yeah, they're not contributing to, um, towards the seventy seven thousand.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Laura?
Um, the, uh, share of the jail costs, uh, do you think our budget needs to eventually increase just as population starts to increase?
Um, we did increase it in fiscal year twenty six. Um, not necessarily in that organized fashion, but just more because looking at our actuals.
Right, okay.
That has gone up, so to match that.
Great.
That's kinda what I was trying to say before too, like when we make changes based upon this data.
And, and just to support you, um, Ms. Hiscoc, I do, I am a little bit frustrated about the, but not that the teachers and staff on the school side don't deserve them, but just the timing of it. And it was, I think, I felt like a little blindsided for sure.
Other questions, comments over here? Dave?
So, um, one thing I'm interested in is the, after all these transfers, what are the various, um, sort of balances in the different, um, like the Stormwater Fund balance and the overall fund balance? I'd like to see where we are. Um, we don't need to go over that tonight, but I would like to see that before we vote on this. Um, second question is, so to understand this, how much money is being appropriated that was not budgeted? In other words, what is, what surplus? The difference between budget and actual expenditures is being used here?
Um, we're requesting a hundred and fifty nine thousand for the Wreckin' Parks, but that's the revenues they're bringing in, portion of the revenues they're bringing in. And then we're using fund balance for the Stormwater Fund. Um, and the, the four, one hundred and fifty nine was for, for the general fund.
Okay.
So the remainder is all from? And so the remainder on the general government side is all from underspending?
Yes.
It's moving between departments. One department because of vacancies or other reasons has underspent. Therefore, that money is now being moved to a different department so that it can be deployed in the, for the reasons listed.
But other than underspending, how much? What I'm trying to get at is what is the surplus over what was budgeted here? That we're, we're really allocating with this?
The only new money are those two that, that Kieran just mentioned. One is the, using the Wreckin' Parks fee revenue that's coming in. So that's new money that's being spent. And then the use of the Stormwater Fund balance, that's new money that's being appropriated.
And then the insurance reimbursement is new money, but that's going to replace?
C I P to, for, for the replacement.
The damaged stuff. So what's the total then that we're, we're basically spending new that we had not previously budgeted?
But the insurance money is not like a surplus. Um, I think you're trying to ask the general fund tax revenues, kind of. We're not using any surplus. We're not asking to rec- recognize any new revenues there. Um, it's just the Wreckin' Park, um, fee, the program fees that we're requesting as a new appropriation. And that's like increasing the revenue and increasing the expenditures.
What's the total of that?
That's a hundred and fifty nine thousand.
So that's the only new?
In general fund, yes.
And, and how about the allocation from the general to the schools? How much more are the schools getting than where they had been budgeted?
So the schools are requesting, uh, to appropriate their fund balance. We're not giving them anything right now. Uh, when we review, um, the, the next time that we review our revenue share is in September when we look at the year-end. And if we end the tax revenues and over budget, then that's, according to the existing understanding, we split that fifty fifty. But at this time, we're not giving any new money to the schools. They are moving between their different funds and funding their projects and using their fund balance.
Okay.
So I had the same questions as Dave when we tried to clarify. So new money we're adding in is two hundred and twenty six thousand. A hundred and fifty nine was Wreckin' Parks and their miscellaneous grants and things. But that's only new money we're adding to the F Y twenty five budget that's gonna end in a month and a half. Now, the schools though have three different funds where they have various fund balances, over a million dollars in some places, where they're then spending that on projects, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I think that because a week ago, we were arguing over what, two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars? And this looks like, so I just wanna explain to the general public what, because we're talking about millions of dollars here tonight. And so I just want it understood that there's very little money that's actually new, new money, right? And that's the two hundred and twenty six thousand, right? And the rest of it is moving money, it's already been budgeted, it's just, and it's, it's not new, we're just moving it from like line item to line item, right?
We did talk last year about what fund balance is appropriate fund balance to be budging towards 'cause we had surpluses for many years in a row and we felt like we were holding on to taxpayer dollars and not incorporating it into operating things, right? So when you have a fund balance, you can only spend it on one-time things. But if you have a million dollar fun, a million dollars in a balance year after year after year after year, maybe it should be incorporating into your budget, your operating budget annually if you constantly have that surplus, which I think, at least I feel like that's where we made some changes over the last year or two on the general government side is incorporating that to the extent possible into our operating budget and not having a large fund balance at the end that we were then spending on whatever, you know, projects were at the end of the year, but really trying to incorporate that into an operating budget.
And does this take account of the fact that we're getting less, less revenue than we projected for this year?
And for that reason, we're not requesting appropriation of any, um, additional revenues because we did the third quarter last, a month ago, over a month ago. And we saw that the general fund tax revenues are not panning out, uh, in line with the budget targets. So yes.
So we'll really have to wait till the fourth quarter?
Correct.
To determine if there is a, if so-called unexpected, unbudgeted new, new money?
Yeah, we, we are expecting some in the interest income and the speed enforcement fines, but not in tax revenues that go into the revenue share.
Yeah. Okay, I think these are just questions we're gonna get asked.
Exactly, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for asking this. That, that was a good way to ask it, 'cause I had the same questions. And the thing that I just wanna clarify is, I've been looking at this. There were two school board budget change memos, one from November and one from May. So as I was looking at that, I'm assuming that the November one was the churning up of the revenue share from the previous year. But it hadn't all officially been moved around properly.
So they did the revenue share portion, but they did not appropriate additional funds from their fund balance. So we're doing that portion now.
Okay.
They didn't ask to appropriate any of their two point million at that time.
But that cleans up the fact that they were carrying?
Carrying it forward, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Other questions? Uh, so I have a clarifying question as well. So I think originally when the schools were looking to us to help with the eight hundred sixty thousand dollar baseball net issue, based on my reading of this, from their two different funds, they have enough fund balance from the operating fund, this community services fund, and then the food service fund to cover the net issues. That is now not an issue, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then they also have enough money to cover the concession stand?
Correct.
Correct. And what is their fund balance? If I, I think I read somewhere, they still have nine hundred?
And twenty six thousand.
Going into F Y twenty six?
Correct.
And how much is planned to be used in F Y twenty six? Do we know?
This accounts for, um, after the use of that fund balance.
Oh, so nine twenty six is just the balance? That, that doesn't even include that what they're gonna use for operating going into F Y twenty six? Nine twenty six is? After the use?
No, I think they have, I, typically they use somewhere around four hundred and fifty thousand. So that's not accounting. They're accounting for fiscal year twenty four and fiscal year twenty five, but not twenty six in there. And the nine hundred and twenty six thousand.
I guess my question is, you know, there was some angst about, you know, enrollment and whether they were gonna use up their enrollment reserves. But it sounds like whether it's nine twenty six or five hundred or whatever it's gonna be, they have enough fund balance to cover unexpected needs. That's kinda ultimately the question I'm trying to answer.
But typically, we, we like, in the past, they have kept a buffer of at least two years worth of four hundred and fifty each year. So, um, a balance of a million and a half is where we've been most, like in the last seven, eight years at that time until before COVID. And, um, four fifty for two years is a close to a million and then additional half a million.
Does that include also the, the two other funds, the community service funds and then the?
No, so the community service fund is, um, six hundred and seventy thousand and, um, the food service fund is three hundred and eighty. So all of these three together is, uh, close to two million.
And do they have policies on what those targets should be at and what floors they should be at, or do we know?
I will have to look into that. I know they have a policy on the operating fund and that is two percent of their expenditures.
The reason I ask all this is again, is truing back to that discussion we had where we had some anxiety about if they needed to come to us for an extra teacher. And I'm like, well, it sounds like you have enough funds based on these three to cover those unexpected needs. I don't know what their policies are and I don't need to know them. But this gives me some assurance that they should have enough should they have unexpected enrollment numbers or other concerns. But I guess I would look to the school board to manage that.
And depending on vacancies, they may have some underspending, just like they have this year, so.
And then to Debbie's point earlier about, and I think we looked at this in the budget Q and A, like at least on the general government side, we've said, we don't like to end the year in surplus 'cause it creates structural problems where that really money could have been given back to taxpayers. It could have been spent in operating. I guess I would also look to the school board. And if they end every year with a fund balance above and beyond their two percent or whatever they're supposed to keep, then that would cause me to question whether they need all that money, I guess. And I think we've had eight years now where we've ended with a fund balance of over a million dollars. Um, so as we think about taxpayer burden, I think it's just important to keep in mind as we go into a potential downturn in the economy where that money is best spent. Any final questions?
I think at year-end financial report time, we, um, you know, we'd like to have a very clear report. What was our, um, plan for the budget? What did we actually spend? There's usually a delta, that's what we call our underspending, the council re-appropriates that. Um, I think it should be part of the regular practice that that's very visible on the school side as well. And I think that would be helpful.
Yes, 'cause we, we both potentially have extra revenue, right? Like if things perform better, then we have more revenue in general government. Sometimes they get state grants, they get extra revenue. But the underspending is the concern. Because if we've appropriated it too and you haven't spent it, then the question is, why didn't you spend it? Do you really need it? Correct?
I, I would say as a former school board member, I know that the school board and this, and the superintendent get, um, sensitive, sensitive in terms of, uh, city council, you know, wanting to know what exactly they're spending the money on. But on the other hand, I feel like if we're being transparent, then they should be transparent. So I think that's what's a little bit disappointing to me. I felt like, um, you know, at the end when we were talking about, is it, is it New Year's Eve? Like what are we cutting? You know, we were pretty, you know, is it, is it the, this one personnel position? And then it's the New Year's Eve, you know? And I don't think we ever really saw that from the schools. And so I, you know, and I do respect that we can't tell them how to spend. But on the other hand, again, if we're being transparent on how we're spending, you know, so that we don't end up with, you know, a chunk of change at the end. Um, you know, I think it, it's important for them to be transparent as well. I will say that, you know, when, traditionally when we end, when schools end with that kind of money, that's how initially how this baseball field came to be 'cause we had two million dollars at least left over at that, my last year on the school board. That's where the baseball field came in. You know, there've been years too where we, like I said, I think I've said before, you know, two electric buses cost close to eight hundred thousand dollars. So, um, so I know that is one of the things that a lot of times they'll use that one-time money for. But again, I, I, I do think that, you know, working together, both sides being transparent, I think, can only help.
Final questions, thoughts on this? Okay, I think we're ready to move on. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, before you call the next item, which is the council salaries?
Yes.
Report.
We have disclosures for that.
We do have disclosures at your desk. Um, for, it's a little bit confusing because, uh, the question is, will you have a personal interest in the salary of a council member, um, as of July one, twenty twenty six? Which is when this would go into effect, so it's a year from now. And some of you have terms that will cross over that boundary, the July one, twenty twenty six date. And some of you don't. But you might be running for reelection or you might wanna reserve your right to run for reelection. So, um, the way I've crafted the disclosure is that everyone would state the first part that says state. And then, um, you would choose either number one or number two. And I suppose there could be a number three if your, if your term ends this year and you have no intention of running for council, then, um, you would not have a personal interest in this ordinance. So, um, uh, but you don't need to announce tonight whether you're running for council or not. You just, if you think you might, uh, number two is for you. And if your term ends after July one, twenty twenty six, number one is for you.
Should we start one end and go to the other?
Thank you. The city council is discussing tonight an ordinance that would increase the salaries of the mayor and city council members effective July first, twenty twenty six. My term on council will conclude after July first, twenty twenty six, causing me to have a personal interest in this ordinance. However, I have elected to participate in this transaction because I'm able to participate in it fairly objectively and in the public interest.
The city council is discussing tonight an ordinance that would increase the salaries of the mayor and council members effective July first, twenty twenty six. My term on council concludes this year. However, I may choose to seek another term, which is, if successful, would cause me to have a personal interest in this ordinance. I have elected to participate in this transaction because I am able to participate in it fairly objectively and in the public interest.
The city council is discussing tonight an ordinance that would increase the salaries of the mayor and council members effective July one, twenty twenty six. My term on council concludes this year. However, I may choose to seek another term, which is successful, would cause me to have a personal interest in this ordinance. I've elected to participate in this transaction because I'm able to participate in it fairly objectively and in the public interest.
The city council is discussing tonight an ordinance that would increase the salaries of the mayor and council members effective July first, twenty twenty six. My term on council will conclude after July first, twenty twenty six, causing me to have a personal interest in this ordinance. However, I have elected to participate in this transaction because I am able to participate in it fairly objectively and in the public interest.
City council is discussing tonight an ordinance that would increase the salaries of the mayor and council members effective, effective July first, twenty twenty six. My term on council concludes this year. However, I may choose to seek another term, which if successful, would cause me to have a personal interest in this ordinance. I have elected to participate in this transaction because I am able to participate in it fairly objectively and in the public interest.
The city council is discussing tonight an ordinance that would increase the salaries of the mayor and council members effective July first, twenty twenty six. My term on council will conclude after July first, twenty twenty six, causing me to have a personal interest in this ordinance. However, I have elected to participate in this transaction because I am able to participate in it fairly objectively and in the public interest.
The city council is discussing tonight an ordinance that would increase the salaries of the mayor and council members effective July first, twenty twenty six. My term on council concludes this year. However, I may choose to seek another term, which if successful, would cause me to have a personal interest in this ordinance. I have elected to participate in this transaction because I'm able to participate in it fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Thank you, council.
So um, council, what is before the council for work session discussion is an ordinance that would increase salaries for mayor and council members effective July first. In twenty twenty six, as drafted, uh, this proposed ordinance would increase the annual salary for mayor from eleven thousand five hundred dollars to twenty-two thousand dollars. And the salary for city council members would increase from eleven thousand dollars to twenty-one thousand dollars. The um. The state code regulates salaries for elected officials with salary caps determined based on city population. Um, until um under current state law, cities with a population of fifteen thousand to nineteen thousand or fifteen thousand to twenty thousand effectively. Nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine are authorized to set council member salaries to a maximum of twenty-one thousand and the mayor's salary to. A maximum of twenty-two thousand. Um, the city's population exceeded fifteen thousand, uh, based on both the Weldon Cooper Center and the United States Census estimates. Effective July first of twenty twenty-four, we crossed the fifteen thousand person threshold. The other things that are noted in the staff report, um, one reason for considering an increase in salaries is to lower possible financial barriers for community members from all income levels who might consider running for. Office and to lessen the impacts of such service can have on household expenses such as childcare and other expenses. And in addition, as the city uh continues to grow, elected officials are required to address increasingly complex issues that require substantial time investment. To become informed, gather public input and vote upon. So that's uh the item that's before the council. I will also note that um. On November fourteenth, the council asked that this ordinance be brought forward for a council consideration and also um consideration of benefits. So that the council could actually take action on determining which benefits the city uh council council members would be eligible for. And I I was preparing that staff report and as I was about to post it, I realized there were some additional questions that the council had posed in their November fourteenth. Motion, which I had not addressed, and so I've asked for some additional time to get that information and we will bring that to you at your work session on June twelfth. We do think that the benefits question could be considered by resolution as opposed by ordinance. Benefits are governed by state law, simply to say council members may receive benefits uh that are offered to other employees of of the jurisdiction. So it doesn't have the same regulation that the salary does. And if that were done by resolution, then uh both the ordinance uh for salary and a resolution of benefits could be considered simultaneously. At second uh reading for the salary item. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff or comments for discussion? Mary Beth?
Do we know what other jurisdictions of our size are doing? Are they increasing to that cap?
So I think they're having some of those conversations right now and uh so we're trying to find out what the latest is. I can provide that information by email to the to the city council. I don't have reliable. Uh, I was trying to do a scan and since some of them are in flux, I don't I didn't have reliable information uh for tonight.
But to confirm if we agree to increase, this is the cap to which we can agree, so we can move forward with a cap and then you can assess budget. Based upon benefits, based upon what everybody else has agreed their cap is, if that, you know, influences the way to decide and. It's kind of like the setting the budget, in my mind, it's kind of like setting the budget rate at one twenty-one. Or, you know, whatever we where we set it and then we backed off of it. You can set the salary there and you can back off it, but you can't go the other way. So I am my, that's how I'm viewing it and so I would, I would be in favor in setting it this way. I also think that if there are tight budget times that this isn't one area that would. Likely be trimmed or cut or, you know, if there's a gradual plan for this two years, it increases by this much and this two years, you know, over time. But I I'd like to move forward with having that and I've talked about the reasons multiple times. I don't think I need to waste anybody's time at midnight. Walking through the reasons why I think it's important.
And okay, so I'm misunderstanding then, so this is not to set our salaries, this is to set the cap?
You can say the right legal words about this is to.
I think the way it's drafted is to set the salaries.
But then budget's not appropriated until.
But between first and second reading, you can kind of go. Down, but probably not up, kind of like budget.
Right.
And it's also subject to the F Y twenty-seven budget appropriation, because it starts July first, so we could decide. Next spring to not give ourselves the raises.
And then um. So it. So we, so this would be something that we could um, so if we set sort of this is the ceiling, we could adjust. On a yearly basis or?
Well, I think that's an interesting question. I think the salaries have to be set by ordinance.
Okay.
So you could have an ordinance that sets a cap, but you would still need an ordinance that actually sets the salary. And.
Like your tax rate.
And while the budget appropriation, the appropriation ordinance is an ordinance. Uh, I do think, uh, I'd have to look, but I think that the the topic would have to be separated. But you could do it concurrently with your appropriations ordinance every time you're adopting one of those.
Okay, wait. I thought you had to have two different votes with two different councils to change the salary. So if you set the. If you might be changing, you have to.
It goes into effect the next cycle.
Yeah.
You're right.
So we can't change it every year.
So the cap is the first reading.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We got time to get to the second reading, we'll have to actually set it.
That's right. You're right. Um, I don't have the staff report with all the statutory deadlines in there. But you're right, there is a pretty strict set of statutory deadlines and it's four months. The vote has to take place four months in advance of the general election. Really, you're not in a position to be flexible on a year-to-year basis.
Okay, I I mean, I'll just, I don't, you know, I don't think I've made this public, but I don't collect a salary for for city council and um if I'm reelected, I won't be collecting a salary. So I don't have any quote-unquote skin in the game, um, but I do feel strongly, I know Ms. Hiscott has said these same words about just that. I think it's important we make this um a position that more people could consider if it helps them hire childcare, what have you, um, to increase it. I I don't think, I don't really feel like we need to go to that cap, that's a big jump. Well, I did find interesting though is that I'm, you know, I don't remember the rough numbers when I was on school board, but I do remember chair being paid about. Two thousand dollars more than the members, so I was surprised to see that the mayor only has five hundred dollar difference. Um, in salary, when we all know she works about five hundred times more of the hours than, so I mean, I might. Throw that out there, that maybe um there's a little bit more differentiation between the mayor's um salary versus the rest of the city council. But um again, I I I support the cap, I don't think I I, that's a big jump in one year, I I don't know if we need to go to that, but. Again, I think the more that we can um make this financially doable, we may see more people run in the future. Thanks.
Other comments?
I guess I've said before, my view sort of stands on this, I would, you know, support some increase, but like Laura, I'm not comfortable doubling council salaries. I think the. Resolution, like I'm not comfortable with the language of the resolution to represent in lines eighty-four to eighty-six that somehow the quantity and. Complexity of the work and investment in time that council has put in, for example, from the last. Increase that was only last summer to the next increase warrants doubling council salaries. I think also, you know, I've raised before. Section fifteen point two, fourteen fourteen point six, which is the statutory code language on this. In subsection F states, any member of a council shall be eligible to be reimbursed for any personal expenses incurred by him for official, him or her for official business. So um, you know, reasonable expenses, so if there are. Things like childcare, elder care, or whatever else that come up on an individual basis for official duties, the statutory code already allows people to seek those. Reimbursements, so I'm not comfortable representing that somehow, you know, we need to give. Eleven thousand dollar salary increases to people because otherwise they're absorbing costs that they are otherwise paying out of pocket because I think the code allows.
Do we have a budget for that? I've never, I've never seen anybody, not that I have insight into it, but do we have a budget for? So maybe it's not in the salary, but there's a budget allocation for those who would need to be reimbursed for childcare, elder care or whatever else is happening. I don't, I don't know that we. Like the code might provide for that, but does our budget provide for that? Because in my mind, that's kind of what this budget is, but you're correcting my assumption on that. So maybe some of the fund needs to go to another place so that there could be.
Right, or like, I don't know if it goes in, you know, like when we get reimbursed for going to things like V M L or, you know. It comes out of some budget and so, you know, I would support putting an increased amount in that budget, but I don't think, like when I think about. We fought last year over sixty-five thousand dollars to, you know, fund two hours at the library and this is an eighty-one thousand dollar increase and what are the benefits to the community? Like we all put in a lot of work, but like at the end of the day, these are public service positions, no one's, you know, running for the salary. We're not the equivalent of part-time employees or full-time employees of the organization and I think that it blends roles and gets. Potentially city council like overly enmeshed in city business to think of ourselves as. Like employees of the city government, um, and it's just, you know, a perspective question. They see the role differently, you know, I'm not saying that people don't put in the amount of work that like is the equivalent of. Full-time positions, right? But it's a choice in terms of how people are spending their time and I, you know, think that the role. You know, the the difficulties that people have in taking on this role aren't the incremental amount in the salary, the difficulties are the. Burden, so to speak, that we have absorbed for a council in terms of the amount of time that we put into the job, the amount of additional meetings we go into. The amount of board and liaison, like board and commission liaison meetings that we show up to where the boards and commissions don't necessarily need us there every month. That is making this like an unattainable position for more people in the community. And and so like, I I just would like the resolution to also look different than it currently looks to the extent that, you know. Council feels undercompensated or feels like, you know, that there are um, you know, benefits to increasing the salary to allow more people. To potentially like serve in this position, that's fine, but I don't want to make misrepresentations about like, but I viewer misrepresentations about the basis for. The salary increase and I would also like to see the benefits because I do think that it's like an overall cost to the taxpayer base when you think about. Not only the salary, but like what does it mean with the benefits going to that and it might be that the benefits are frankly like more important for people. To serve in this role and stay in this role than like the salary is and and they go together in terms of like overall budget implications.
So if I could, on that one state code provision that talks about expenses related to the position and getting reimbursed. I would not have read it to include costs like babysitting and so um with your permission, if it's, if it ends up being an important. Um, provision in state code that is going to materially affect your decisions, then I can ask um for an interpretation of that section from the Attorney General's office. To understand what those expenses might entail.
Yeah, my understanding, I mean, when we just did the Koya training was they said, you know, official business is sort of official meetings and I would think that if you potentially have. Costs, you know, that you can't otherwise have covered in order to be at an official meeting, then those are costs that are reasonable, but yeah, thank you.
And so I I believe I need the council's kind of consent to request an an opinion like that, so if everyone could just kind of, if anyone objects, could you let me know?
How much resources does it take from you to do that?
To to write the, I have to write the opinion for the attorney general and then they let me know if it's right or wrong.
I guess at the end of the day, when I listen to like Dana talk about a, you know, the affordable living policy and how fantastic it is to have people at the table who are. Using the programs in housing and that's just one example, but I mean, you know, we're all, everybody in here is a homeowner, like I would love to have somebody who's a renter or somebody who is. A different socioeconomic or demographic um as part of council and so I think this is just one where not, may not be the. Enticement, it might be an enticement, um, or at least um net neutral for somebody to participate in um in this form and I, you know, I don't. I don't think anybody would go in into it thinking it's the, you know, full-time job or as many, although many people may treat it that way, um, that that's not the reason. But I I guess that however we net this out, like that's my goal, whether that's through salary or through um, you know, cost of childcare or elder care, so that more people could be participate. Um, I think that's, I think that's my goal and so I don't, I don't know the best way to do that, but that's why my initial reaction is to set it at a cap. And then, you know, think about if it needs to be measured out or if it, you know, has another X number of years, you know, to your, to your point, like we look at budgets of, you know. Two point eight million dollars for a baseball field, like that's a public good and it's great and it's awesome. But I don't want to have people not here at the table making decisions about how the baseball fields get funded because we're not going to spend another seventy or eighty thousand dollars worth of that. Worth of taxpayer funds for that to keep on top of. All the other expenses and expenditures, so. That's just a philosophy and I appreciate those who are much better at the details and the, you know, state code and. Thinking it through, but that's the underpinning about why I comment the way I am.
I I would agree with Ms. Hiscott on that one, that it's a. We want to have as many people at the table as possible and if that. You know, when I first started on here and I'm sure Dave can say even less, but it was seven thousand dollars a year that was this, and it it was laughable. The amount of work and the learning curve and everything else and and none of us did it for the money and still don't do it for the money, but. But I do think that there are opportunities for more people to get involved if there's, if there's a little more remuneration for that, the amount of money, the amount of time. I say at twelve nineteen A M. Dave?
So I'll um, in view of the economic conditions that our citizens in the region is in right now, I can't support this increase and will vote against it. Like you, I didn't take a salary for a long time, finally did and basically what I use the current salary for is to reimburse, like I don't charge for hotel rooms when I go to V M L. I use it for mileage in the automobile um and transit costs that otherwise would be reimbursable, but I. I just feel this sent the wrong signal at this point, so I can't support it.
Justine?
In terms of writing a a letter to the attorney general, would that um take an incredible amount of your time or is that something that would be fairly?
It's doable, but then right after I said that, I I only have, we only have a month to get that opinion back and there's a good chance we would not get an answer. But there's a chance we could, so I don't know, but I could put it together and um. And send it off and see if I can make some phone calls and get some guidance.
Yeah, I would be, I would like to know the answer to that.
It seems important to several of you to understand if that's reimbursable.
Yeah.
I guess regardless of the A G opinion, I think in general I support the idea of, while this may not make it. Entirely possible, it does make it more possible for more diverse voices to be here. It is one of the factors of why people serve and so I think. Regardless of whether the A G opinion, I would support at least at the first reading, setting it at the cap and we can have more discussions between first and second reading on. You know, what that might be or phasing it in over time as well, um, we can figure out what a reasonable path looks like. I think I generally heard majority support for that with some changes to the result. The ordinance language. Is that right? I heard head nods around the room.
So the idea would be adopt the, even if it's a phased salary, adopt the entire formula by June thirtieth and. It can get implemented over time. Is that what I'm hearing? As a, as a thought?
As one option, I think there's probably people who might. Be okay with it as is with the twenty-one and the twenty-two.
Right, right off the bat. Right, right off the bat.
Is that right? Is that what I heard?
I would be if you removed the reference to, what's that, 84 to 86? Because I don't think you're doubling it because of the quantity or the complexity. You know, if that language is misrepresenting, strike the language. You're doing it because you have authority to do so from the state. This is new. We have an increase in population over the opportunity to provide remuneration for time spent doing the role. And then we can talk further about whether that, you know, at what rate, over what time, or, you know, all at once. So.
I will say, and I'd have to check just to make sure this is correct, but my, what I think I remember seeing is that the reasons this cap has increased so significantly is the general assembly didn't update their salaries for many years. So everyone's kind of been underpaid for a while in their point of view. And then, you know, when they, I guess they very recently decided that was the case and made up for lost time.
And when we did it in '24, that was the first time in 10 years that we had done it in Falls Church. That's why I think it felt like, oh my gosh, we done '24, we're considering in '25 or '26. But realistically, the last time we had done it before '24 is probably 2014 or earlier, if I have my history correct. Okay, is that enough direction for staff?
Can I just ask another? During the budget process, we heard from the planning commission that we consider increasing their salaries? I know it's a different ordinance, but on the same topic. Is there a limit on planning commission salaries similar from the state?
There's not.
So that would just be on us in the next budget or in the future budget to decide that we would increase planning commission salaries?
Is it also by ordinance or resolution?
I don't, I don't know. Personally, I, I mean, I don't, I haven't looked up the law, so I can say that. But it seems to me that it should be an ordinance and not a resolution.
Anything else on this one? Presuming since it's 12:30, we're not going to do schedule tonight. Okay, any other items? Okay. Good night all. I think we're done.
Good night. Thank you, council.